Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting. It's the first meeting of our new school year. So, as always, it's a special one. So, please stand and join in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission of the White Plains City School District is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence in memory of Ms. Mary Fiori. Ms. Fiori was an elementary teacher at Rosedale School from 1974 to 1990. Thank you.
Next, we'll have the public hearing on the district-wide safety and emergency management plan. Yeah, any questions on that? No questions?
Can you just highlight any changes or updates that there might be?
The plan is substantially the same as it's been in the past. There are some additions, including memorandum of agreements that have been required in the new law. We've worked closely with Alteris to complete our plan and to submit them on time and to be ready to submit. And this is the culminating portion of the public portion of review. Thank you.
So, if there are no questions, I guess we will vote on that at our next meeting. Thank you. Next, we will have our announcement of the 2009 Hall of Fame inductees, the best-kept secret in White Plains.
It's my pleasure to announce the next four distinguished White Plains High School graduates who have been chosen for induction into the White Plains High School Hall of Fame. The Hall of Fame celebrates the achievements of truly outstanding graduates and recognizes the contributions of our high school teachers and staff. The four graduates who will be inducted into the Hall of Fame this fall join eighty-two other distinguished graduates, ranging from the class of 1921 to the class of 1984 who have been inducted into the Hall of Fame in past years. Each has been selected by a dedicated committee of school and community representatives who review all nominations each year. Here now, in the order in which they graduated from White Plains High School, are the 2019 inductees. John Davidson, class of 1959. Mr. Davidson's remarkable and enduring entertainment career has spanned more than fifty-five years. He has starred on Broadway in State Fair, Oklahoma, and Wicked, appeared in major movies, including Disney's The Happiest Millionaire, hosted the iconic TV game shows The Hollywood Squares and That's Incredible. Was guest host -- I'm not even done with him yet. Was guest host of The Tonight Show starring Johnny Carson over eighty times. So, he was enduring in that capacity. And has had his own network variety show. Most of all, he's a singer with thirteen albums and a career that continues with performances around the country to this day. Leslie Tompkins, class of 1972. Leslie recently retired after a distinguished career as a teacher and administrator at White Plains High School. As band director for more than fifteen years, Leslie revived the institution and helped bring an already fine music program to a new level of success. Following her teaching, Leslie transitioned into the key role of head of the guidance department, where, under her leadership, the guidance and counseling department became an award-winning, family-centered department dedicated to serving the students and families of our district. John J. Saldi IV, class of 1972. J. Saldi played more than one hundred games over ten seasons in the National Football League for the Dallas Cowboys and the Chicago Bears. As a tight end and special teams player, he was a key member of the Cowboys' Super Bowl champion team. He recently co-authored a book on the important topic of safety in football called Concustitution. Mia Habbie-Kring, class of 1981. Mia Kring, an outstanding athlete who was the only girl on the White Plains High School boys' soccer team, so I guess maybe that year it wasn't really the boys' soccer team, went on to a varied career in national service. She joined the U.S. Army, serving in Germany, Italy, and Korea, where she became a combat flight medic. She later served in Army Reserves and the National Guard and is now a federal agent with the Department of Homeland Security. On Thursday, October 24th, this distinguished group of alumni will be spending time with students in the school and at 3:00 PM will be inducted into the White Plains Hall of Fame in a ceremony in our high school media center. Since its inception in 1996, Hall of Fame Day has become one of the highlights of the school year. And we really hope that you'll join us. Everyone in the community is more than welcome to come. It's a really great day. So, thank you for giving me this time and congratulations to the inductees.
Thank you, Ellen. And also, you know, it's the first meeting of our school year. Also, it was an honor to be in your house on opening day and experience the magic that you help bring to that high school for the students. And we thank you. Next, we're going to move on to public participation. Will there be any public participation because it is crowded? Public participation. Next, we'll move to the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much. Happy New Year, everybody, and welcome back. And before I move into my report, I would like to, again, thank Ms. Doherty and congratulate our honorees for this year. It's very exciting, looking forward to that. Also, would like to welcome our two student liaisons and welcome you to the podium. And again, ask you to introduce yourselves. And thank you so much for taking the time to come out. I know you have so much homework to do this evening.
Hi, my name is Esteban Burrow. I'm a senior.
Hi, my name's Lauren Elmer. I'm also senior at White Plains High School.
So, so far, sports have started pretty smoothly. Also, clubs are starting to meet this week. And students are getting into the classes they want through work with their guidance counselor, you know, while changing schedules and making sure they take the classes that they want.
Yeah, overall, the start of the school year has been pretty smooth so far. We have a lot of freshmen entering the building just now. And that can be a pretty daunting task for most tiny fourteen-year-olds who have no idea how to navigate the building. And so, I've been lucky to see a lot of people cooperating with one another, giving each other directions, really being a welcoming environment for so many new people. And the class of 2023 has their first student government meeting coming up this week. So, that should be something to look forward to. I actually hope to sit in on that meeting to do a little story for the newspaper. Keep an eye out for that, theorange.com. So far, we've had a lot of really good clubs coming up, just as Esteban stated. Already, we've had, I think, like five clubs meet in this one day. And it's not even been a full week of school yet. The Moms of White Plains Facebook group has said nothing but good things for the start of the school year so far.
Wait, hold on, you're on that?
Yes, I love that Facebook group.
I can't get on it.
Yeah. Yeah, so overall, it's been pretty good so far. Thanks for having us, guys.
Good, thank you. For the freshmen, there was also a great orientation where they were walked around the building and had the opportunity to visit classrooms, see lockers, so on and so forth. So, thank you again very much for all of that. So, most important, again, and especially for our parents and guardians and community members at home, thank you very much. The opening of school is always a very exciting time. It's also a very stressful time at home. We recognize that. We're trying to do everything we can to reduce stress. We know that sometimes transportation at the beginning of the school year is difficult. And I'll tell you that our team is working really, really hard to make sure each and every situation that arises is fixed as we smooth routes, get our times up and running. And just thanks for your patience and for your understanding. It's been a really smooth opening, you know, despite the normal hiccups at the beginning of the year. We welcomed all of our children back, all of our faculty and staff back. And it's almost like we never left after we finished our first official Monday today. So, thanks again. And also, keep an eye out for our school snapshots, which is going to be and is our new e-newsletter. If you're not getting it and you're interested in getting it, please reach out to either me or Ms. Schoenfeld, and we can make sure we get you on that list and get that to you. I do want to go through a few updates with the Board of Education this evening with facilities, security and safety, transportation, food services, and technology, just to give you a sense of some of the work that was completed over the summer. And that's still sort of in the hopper right now. We have thirty-two capital projects, which you're aware, and one hundred and thirty-nine total maintenance projects. Many or most are substantially complete right now. We do have some that we need to go out and rebid. And we're working on that now, as well as we have six projects, rather, in our capital that are being prepared by our architects. In terms of maintenance, a lot of work all throughout the district. Twenty projects right now we're preparing scope of work and soliciting proposals, and sixteen are on hold for scope and budget and planning review. So, there's always a lot happening, as you know. It's a point of pride in our district that all of our buildings are in outstanding shape. And just want to thank all of our team members for that work. Just some examples of some of the work that took place over the course of this summer. And you can see our new clocks and the roof work that took place, as well as the ramp work that took place at MAS, other repointing, and our student announcement system or P.A. systems in the buildings as well. Capital projects, P.A. and Intercom, working toward completion at the various schools is listed above. The roofing as well at the high school fieldhouse. That's been complete, Church Street. GW working toward the membrane and MAS and Rochambeau, rather. Rochambeau complete, MAS is substantially complete. The ramp at MAS will be finished up. We're putting the railing in in September. We're pretty much finished up with the repointing at Rochambeau. The restrooms, we're still soliciting bids for Ridgeway and then domestic, everyone's favorite, the domestic water backflow preventers. GW and Ed House, we're soliciting bids there. Safety and security, again, a great deal of work, all in line with the original plan that we had put in place years ago to continue to bring a safe and secure structure to the district in a uniform manner. We have building-level emergency plans that our principals and our school safety teams have been, building-level safety teams have been diligently working on. Again, our drills and calendar of drills. We have the new security assistance in place. And you know, as I'm visiting buildings, one of the things that I noticed that I actually looked twice today out the window at Ridgeway was that our security assistants at the elementary level are now walking the perimeters during lunchtime. So, I actually saw in the corner of my eye somebody, an adult, walking across the tree line. And I looked and there was our security professional. So, that's all in place right now, and we're happy to have them on board. Our lockdown systems are in place in post-Road Highlands, Eastview, and Ridgeway. And we're looking at rebidding in the other schools. Training has begun through our global compliance network, as well as face-to-face trainings that have taken place and will continue to take place. Police training is going to be happening throughout the course of the academic year. We're going to be working with the Department of Public Safety to open our buildings for the police departments to be able to train in our buildings when students aren't there. So, again, so they remain familiar with all the nooks and crannies and every aspect of our buildings. And we also have our building-level threat assessment teams in place. A lot of work, you know, related to safety and security, which you want, of course. But at the same time, you recognize, as you're undergoing, you know, the true depth that we have to continue to go into to make sure that our buildings are safe and secure for our children. Food service, a lot took place over the course of the summer. And this just kind of gives you an update. We fed about nine hundred children per day. We continue to be the satellite for the city's childcare agencies during the school year and about three hundred and fifty children per day. We went through staffing and training, as well as replacement of kitchen equipment all throughout the district. We have our wellness committee, which is working on the smarter lunchroom. This was something that we were talking about, I think, a couple of months ago, making sure that we're offering our children smarter alternatives and more nutritious and also delicious alternatives in the cafeterias. In 1920, we're looking to make more meals accessible to our students. And we're looking at breakfast after the bell as a possibility, as well as weekend meals and food pantries, which have become ideas that we're going to be looking into. So, you know, the idea is that we want to get more food into the tummies of our kids. We recognize that when school's not in session, that poses a big problem. And if we can do anything to help, we want to be able to do that as well.
And we have food pantries now.
We do.
Is it two at the schools?
We have one that is solid, and we have another that's opening right now. Yep. Or GW, and then going to be opening up Post-Road. Yep. Transportation, just to give you an update. And again, thank you very much for your patience. And thank you very much also to Sergio Alfonso and the Transportation Department, who's been working really, really hard to bring customer service to a new level here in the district. We conducted driver route training in August and made sure that they were familiarized with their routes. Mandatory training is, again, takes place in August and practice runs. It's important to remember that all of our children will participate in bus evacuation drills. That is something that happens annually, as well as the DBT app has been updated. We have heard from some people that that app, you know, doesn't work great, that sometimes that GPS tracker app isn't working great. So, here, you know, what we're struggling with right now is the technology sometimes is not ideal, but there is no in-between. It's either it's on or it's not. So, you know, what we ask is that if it's not working for you, that you let us know, and we'll work with the provider to update that app as best as we can. But also know that there are many other buses that are working and that, you know, it's on time and it's giving parents a good reading. So, as we continue to, I guess, you know, develop and refine that technology, there are going to be hiccups along the way. Remember, we are, I still think we're the only school district that's actually utilizing this. And, I mean, one can understand when there are bugs, you know, that folks are maybe apprehensive to start it. But we were happy to have it running, and we're going to continue to work at it. We're using our Zoner as well to give us real-time updates of where our buses are and, again, continue to troubleshoot our bus routes and drop runs and work on parent requests. Our Transportation Department is very, very responsive. So, please feel free to reach out at any time, and we'll do everything we can to be as helpful as possible. Technology updates during the course of the summer were many. We moved to the data center, to Bosse's, which will help us reduce the costs associated with servers in the future. We expanded our voice-over Internet telephones and speakers and clock systems, which I mentioned before, as well as working with the Facilities Department, converted three computer labs into general ed classrooms. We installed card readers and district copiers, which is going to help us to count the number of copies that we make throughout the course of the year to be able to determine where efficiencies can be found moving forward. We also reimaged four thousand machines, replaced three hundred desktops, deployed a thousand iPads. You have five hundred in grade six, a hundred for Rochambeau, two hundred for the high school teachers to be distributed in November. And we moved five hundred iPads from Highlands to the elementary schools because we have, as we had mentioned in the past, those students have their own iPads. So, we're able to push down the iPads into the elementary schools now.
And so, and this is during the summer. So, I would think this is no small feat to get all of these iPads ready for our students starting school. So, just kudos. I mean, that is no small task. So, sorry.
No, absolutely. And you're absolutely right. And we're actually in the process of distributing, finishing up the distribution right now. And it is going smooth, but it is a big, it's a big job. Yep.
I also wanted to mention, just going back on moving the data center to Bosse's and the REC, that many of you have probably read in the newspaper about these issues with ransomware.
Right.
And Bosse's is really working very proactively to put in as much protection as possible. So, I think that's a very good move.
There have been several school districts in the state and in the country that have actually been targeted by ransomware and had their data held hostage, as well as hospitals and government agencies.
And one school delayed their opening.
Yeah.
They had to delay their opening.
Just a reminder, it is available on the district website as well, the 2020, 2021, right, Ms. Doherty's laughing, budget calendar. And we will be meeting and having a conversation in October, which will be very soon, with the community related to budget development. Here we go again. That's right.
That was a quick year.
It was a quick year. Strategic planning was great. I had mentioned this last week, or last month, rather. It was great. And we were just so thankful for all the folks who participated in strategic planning with us again for our second year. The plan itself remains the same, but the indicators, or rather, the goals within the plan have changed, they have shifted. So, at the elementary level, we're looking to increase our mean growth percentiles. For English Language Arts and Mathematics, we want to, our aspirational goals are sixty. We're looking to increase our district cohort graduation rate for all students to ninety-five. Again, always pushing, always looking to move, as well as indicators related to rigor at the high school. And Ms. Doherty and her team have worked really hard on that. Thank you, Ellen. We are looking to continue to maintain our absentee rates. Our chronic absenteeism is way, chronic absenteeism is way down. We went from fifteen to four-point-nine through some changes in the way in which data was reported, as well as very, very targeted interventions that took place at our schools. We are looking to, again, continue to increase our access within our classrooms for students with disabilities, up to sixty percent. We are also, and this was a big push from the committee, we're in the process of completing a survey and inventory of both our social-emotional learning programming within the district and throughout the district, as well as equity and how we approach equity all throughout the district at every level and every facet. So, we'll be looking in the future to solicit folks who are interested in participating in a district-wide equity committee. That'll be information that'll be coming out very shortly. And again, we're going to be focusing to continue to educate, support, and partner in every aspect to support all of our children. So, we're very excited about this plan. And what is really great, again, is that it's a plan that we revisit each and every year. And we make adjustments based on our progress or lack thereof and make shifts based on what the committee thinks moving forward. This will be a process that we continue to work on annually. And we think that it will keep us in a continuous improvement model, rather than sort of approaching it every five to seven years. Just some quick upcoming things. We have Guidance Night that's coming up on the 12th, of course, September 11th, a day of remembrance and a day of service. We have a very special football game on Friday, the 13th, which happens to also be a full moon, so I hope it all works out well. Right, we're not playing Sleepy Isle, no. But it's Tiger Cubs night. And this was something, this was something we wanted to do for a long time. And we did it first time in earnest, I think, last year, where we have our little ones come out and are recognized and celebrated at the football game. Thanks to our colleagues at the high school and in the athletic department. It is a fantastic, fantastic evening. And you would think you just gave these kids a million dollars to give them a chance to run up and down the football field at halftime. I mean, the energy and the excitement is really great. I am actually also giving a new school board member training at the Westchester Putnam School Boards Association meeting on Saturday morning, in case anyone wants to join me. We also have Church Street Traffic Safety Day on Saturday as well. And that'll be, we'll have, our Transportation Department will be there, Sergio will be there. Dads and special adult take-your-child-to-school day will be next week. We have open houses and PTA meetings abound, so please consult the calendar as our PTA council meeting. And it also is the same night as the Friends of the White Plains Public Schools Back to School Night Out. But you can probably figure out how to do both. Will be taking place on the 19th. Of course, we're celebrating and observing Rosh Hashanah on the 30th and the 1st. And in October, you will hear more about our 2019, 2020 district goals and objectives and the 2021 budget input session. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
So, next we'll go to announcements from the board.
Thank you.
For those who don't know, a few days before the start of the school year, there's a kickoff at the high school. And all district employees and staff are there, and we are there. And this is, this was my thirteenth, Cheryl Knight's, our thirteenth year on the board. A lot of stability on the board. It was very, very exciting this year. The energy in the room was incredible. And just to see all the staff, how they support one another, and it was just, it was a great event, what Joe put on. We had a Dr. Kirkland came in and gave us just an incredible presentation leading into this conversation that we're going to be having about equity across our district. That was great. And then I took the opportunity because my office, I actually work for a living, but my office is nearby. So, I dropped in after speaking to Joe. I met with the new principals at Eastview and at Ridgway. And, you know, with every opportunity, with every change, there's an opportunity for growth. And these are two incredible women that we have at Eastview. We have Daisy and Daisy and Jessica at Ridgway. And they are just remarkable, both of them. Thank you to Scott Pepper, to everyone who was involved in hiring these two women. I think they bring a lot of intelligence. They bring a lot of perspective. They bring a lot of experience, and they creating really good environments in the schools. So, it's really exciting when you see that. And I think that's it.
So, I'll just, you know, I'll just mention also, we were all there, and it was just a really nice opening, the high school band, the girls' softball team. Just a really nice and magical opening at our high school. Can't thank you enough, Ellen, for what you bring in terms of leadership to the high school. I also had opportunity to attend the swim carnival at the high school. And I can tell you that our facilities and their maintenance is unmatched. We are a destination pool. A lot of people want to use our pool. I have to say thank you to, you know, Frank Stephanelli in terms of facilities and operations. I can tell you that I go to many other schools, many other pools. Many other schools are scrambling for a place for their teams to have a swim meet. It is crazy. But we are a destination pool, and that's because of our facilities and operations. So, I just want to say thank you for that. And just thank you for, to all the colleagues that did whatever they had to do this summer to bring our kids to this day. You know, this is, I guess, our second favorite day. You know, the first favorite day is when they graduate and we see them off. And it's not like we want to see them off. You almost want to hold on to them because you've seen them progress through every step. But this is when we bring in more kids into our family. So, to have our schools ready the way they were, to welcome our kids, thank you to the colleagues in curriculum, reviewing student files, anything that had to be done. We're very thankful for. Lastly, I just wanted to say that the e-newsletter was really awesome. It looked good, it was sharp, it's state of the art. So, just want to say thank you for that, Mrs. Schoenfeld, and Joe, and Kevin, and everyone. But really, thank you for that work. That's all I had. Anything else?
I'll just add, we had a great start from my house. A sixth grader going off to middle school who did not have any friends on her team, apparently, the last week of August. But incredibly, she made new friends. Some bus hiccups that hopefully will be ironed out. We were talking about that. It's only the third day. But my daughter is loving Eastview. She texted me the first day, I got the text right here. I said, "How was your first day?" She said, "It was awesome. I love my teachers. When you get home, I'll tell you all about it." So, that is like what you want to hear or read after our first day of middle school. iPads are coming this week. MAS, in a weird twist of coincidence, my daughter's teacher, her son is in my class in Bahala. So, we agreed they'll both get As and pass for the year. So, it's going to be a great year. No, but it's been a great start. And there's so much going on across the district. The car wash is at Church Street. They were chalking the sidewalks. It's just been so much happening across. So, it's really exciting to watch it all happen on Facebook and Twitter. And now, welcome to Instagram. It's, yeah. Was that, okay, good. Yeah, you got to add that.
All three platforms at one time. It's cheating.
No, competing with Mayor Rose.
Thank you, thank you, everyone. The other thing I always say is, you know, whether it's one of us or two of us, we're all there at every event in spirit, in terms of the board family here. So, next we'll move on to summary action items. May I have a motion for summary action items four through eight?
Thank you. I'd like to draw your attention to item B. And I would like to thank And I would like to thank our generous donors for the following donations. $420 from Julia Pastore and Kelsey Lacativea for the Buddy Bench at Eastview in memory of Andrew Lacativea. $250 from Thompson and Bender, and $200 from William Carey, and $600 from Stephanie Priest for the Richard Leapsin Journalism Scholarship. Thank you very much for your generous donations.
Any questions?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, for our individual action items. May I have a motion for an addenda to the agenda? Since we didn't have any questions for the Safety Management Plan, we'd like to add that for approval tonight. So if we can have a motion to add item 9D. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that will be item 9D. So next, we have the recommended approval of the updated 2019 to 2022 District Strategic Plan. May I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next.
Just want to thank everyone who participated in that process.
Yes, absolutely. And it's not, it's not a quick, but it's a deliberate process to really go through what we feel will bring our kids where they should be and excel past where they are for the 21st century. We know it's competitive out there. So this plan tries to encompass everything that we may not even know about at this time to make sure our children are prepared for that.
And a lot of really thoughtful energy.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So thank you, yeah, thank you. I think they'll be here at one meeting.
You know, I think there were a lot of conflicts this evening. We sent out an invitation, yeah. There's just so much happening every night.
Yeah, that's true. Yeah, and we're going to have a touch point as well, in the middle of the year as well, so, thank you. So next, we will have the recommended approval of the resignation for the purpose of retirement of Lucina Roman, aka Lucy Roman, who is the Coordinator of Instructional Technology, Library, Media and Business Education. So the retire, the retirement of Lucy Roman. May I have a motion?
So moved.
So, you know, of course, you know, you know, it's always hard when we, when we see this. And Lucy certainly has been with us for a long time. But, you know, this is, she's moving on to another part of her life, and we're just happy that we've had her for the length of time that we did.
We wish our retirees well.
Yes, we do.
But we also value the great work that they've done on behalf of the district.
And the perspective and the historical knowledge that they have as well, so. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have the recommended action, or the recommended approval of attendance at a professional conference for our superintendent. May I have a motion?
No. She's finally going to figure out what you're doing?
It's a, yeah, Bali. What I'm really excited about is that, you know, oftentimes, most of the professional development that superintendents or principals or administrators go to is, bless you, is focused sort of on leadership. This is focused on instruction, so I'm actually, yeah, yeah, I'm looking forward to it.
All in favor?
Thank you.
Aye.
Aye. Next, we have item 9D, which is the approval of the District-Wide Safety Plan, which we just discussed earlier. May I have a motion? All in favor?
Aye.
And that's because we had no questions initially, anyway.
Thank you.
Great.
Thank you.
So next, we will go into board discussion on our sub-meetings. I think finance met, no?
In August we met, I just have laryngitis.
Oh, no.
Dr. Stein has laryngitis, so if anyone else is there.
We had our first meeting, we went over the calendar. I'm trying to remember all the.
Public participation.
Yes, right.
We're just through the minutes, so.
Right. The minutes are there.
Right, all the details.
So the external auditors were here. We should see them at the next meeting. So again, I think we had, well, I don't want to steal all the secrets and give it away, but I know we had a good external audit, we had a good financial year, kind of our work plan for the year, for next year. Am I getting it all, Doctor? She says, she says we're in the green, so I got the thumbs up.
Cast out all the different meetings and what we'll be doing.
Special ed is coming up.
Next month, do you have laryngitis? You don't have laryngitis. No, you don't have laryngitis.
No, she's not.
Oh, okay.
I heard her last night, she doesn't have laryngitis.
Okay. And we will have a policy meeting.
Coming.
Coming, coming up.
$6,000.
Yes.
$6,000.
Yes. Curriculum is going to come up.
Coming up on 17th.
Right.
Okay, next week. Okay. So I think that covers it.
We will take all of your evenings, if you let us.
We will be there. So, lastly, John Shepherd and Carlos Alvarez, thank you for all you do.
You know, I do want to also call out John Shepherd.
Call him out.
Yes. I'm going to call out him, because John, and he's been doing a really nice job. And one of the things the board was talking about is making sure that our information, our productions are getting out on Channel 77. John has been handling that for us. John also worked on the WP Proud Welcome Back Video, which folks loved because it had fewer adults and more kids in it. Nice job, John. And we're also working on some other projects, including WP Proud Wednesdays, where he's dropping individual clips from throughout the district for folks to be able to see in real time. So John has been, he's been working real hard, he's been real busy, and he's been tailing around with me and going on a lot of interesting events. So thanks, John, for all that.
Thanks, John.
I think we have one coming up on Wednesday, right, John? I'll see you there.
Too bad you couldn't film yourself over there responding.
I'll get, oh, yeah, right.
Yeah, get you on camera. So, thank you, everyone. Thank you for coming. And without further ado, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
So moved. Were you going to motion to close?
Yes. To second.
So, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.